Good evening and welcome to the January first meet regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Mr. Berman, would you call the role?
Mr. Demilio.
Here.
Mr. Aliva.
Here.
Mr. McCloskey.
Here.
Mr. Siegel.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mr. Wexler.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Dr. Hart.
Here.
Chief, would you, Deputy Chief Hagan, would you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge will be to the flag of the United States of America. Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
President, I would, I would like to move to add something to the agenda. It would be a resolution for us to adopt tonight addressing the sold the ad hoc solar committee we discussed at last week's meeting as well as obliquely referenced back in December.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll put that on after Resolution 23.
Perfect.
Next item is Commissioner Committee Updates. Are there any updates?
Kevin?
Mike's off, Kevin. Sorry, I was muted. I did want to point out, sorry for the muted. We received news last week that our application for the RACB grant, the redevelopment assistance capital project grant was approved and it'll provide a million dollars towards the cost of the planned renovations to the township library. RACB projects are authorized in the redevelopment assistance section of the Commonwealth's Capital Budget Itemization Act and must have a regional multi jurisdictional impact. Our plans to update the library for the 21st century and beyond with a new layout, new technology and ADA compliance will hopefully not only benefit Haverford Township but visitors from all over the county. This was a multi-step process in the application. We particularly want to thank Representative Greg Vitale and his staff who not only brought the application opportunity to us but provided support along the way, also to Representative Mike Zabel, who also lent his support. Obviously, this is huge help in terms of our plans in term to renovate the library. And we're immensely grateful for the state for this assistance and hopefully this board can put it to good use in the upcoming year.
Thank you. Next item is the Police Department Crime Update.
Stand by, by the chief trying to sign on right now.
Did somebody steal his computer?
It was in his car.
Yeah. And he left it unlocked.
Left it unlocked.
It looks like our auditor's on, Jerry, if you want to.
Yeah.
Sure.
On the update, Mr. Anderson, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, Jerry, and congratulations again. I reviewed the warrants and expenditures for this meeting. I found no irregularities and all my questions were answered to my satisfaction.
Thank you. We have Chief Iowa as yet.
He had nothing to say about Peterson?
I know, really.
I just lost 10 bucks.
Nothing yet. No words to Peterson.
Wentz?
He's done.
All right, why don't we move on to the Citizens Forum and we can come back to Chief Iowa. I think we have one Zoom speaker, Michelle Alvarez. Mr. Berman?
One moment. Michelle, you should be good to go.
Okay. Michelle Alvarez, 134 Hastings Avenue, Havertown, Pennsylvania. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight and Happy New Year to everybody again. I am speaking, is no surprise, I'm sure, to encourage you to vote for 31, I thought I wrote the number down, to encourage you to vote for purchasing 1744 Glendale Road so that we may connect the missing link of the south end of our Darby Creek Trail connecting us to Upper Darby Township, which through their trail enhancements will someday, not in the far future, but soon future, connect us down all the way to Tinnicum National Reserve Preserve. And I just think it's a wonderful thing. As we all know, the trails are getting major use this year, both Darby Creek and the Penzi Trail. So I think this would be a great enhancement to our future use of that trail to extend it further. So I also encourage you to continue looking and applying for the grants to help support the costs of developing and blazing that trail through that property area as well as to supplement the purchase of that property because I know we don't have the full amount remaining from the sale of Glendale Road property. And finally, I'd just like to say I encourage you to vote in support of the funding for the new turf up at the Crick. It has outlived its lifespan by a couple of years and that's through the great maintenance through the Parks Department and Brian for, you know, hiring the proper company to maintain that field over the years. So and Tim before Brian. So I want to encourage you to vote for the funding, which is already specified in the capital project budget. Other than that, that's it. Thank you very much and have a great night.
Thank you, Michelle. Think before I read the, the rest of the comments, I think I see Chief Iowa is now signed on. No, he was signed on.
Yeah, where is he?
Okay, we'll go back to the, the chief later and go on with the comments. First comment is from Kate Lenahan, who resides at 133 East Benedict Avenue. "I would like to voice my support of the resolution condemning the violence that occurred at the Capitol. What happened was unacceptable and I would expect to hear condemnation from every government representative I have, whether it be national, state, county, or township level. Some may ask, why is this half for township's business? I offer the following in response. For a long time, I was not involved in local politics. I voted in each election for national office and state office, but I cannot recall whether I did more than that. After becoming more involved in local politics, I was surprised at my complacency, particularly given that local office often make the decisions that affect us most personally. They deal with community issues relating to our public schools, our library, and our businesses amongst other areas. I am not saying this is to state that everyone must get involved in the politics, rather I am trying to emphasize the importance that local politics holds on our everyday lives. For this reason, I find it imperative that our local leaders must stand against this violence now. What happened occurred far away from our township, but unfortunately, there are likely those who are sympathetic to the riot in our own community. By our local leadership condemning action and taking a stand, this made clear that these attitudes have no place in our local government. Those, there are those in our community who might wrongfully equate the violence forming of the US Capitol to the looting that occurred in some communities shortly after the murder of George Floyd. All violence must be condemned and all rioters and looters should be prosecuted. However, our democracy was directly under siege on Wednesday. And sadly, Capitol Officer Brian Sicknick was murdered while protecting our elected representatives from this mob. Yet our president has refused to even lower the White House flags to have staff to honor the heroic sacrifice of Officer Sicknick. Despite violence being fine, I applaud the Board of Commissioners for leading by example and refusing to be silent while reflecting on one of the darkest days in our nation's history. I hope all the Commissioners can ask for the drawing of a resolution condemning violence that occurred at the US Capitol. Lastly, for some levity, I remember the great chicken debate by the Board of Commissioners. It does seem like a game. I showed my mother footage of the YouTube footage of the chicken debate. She asked me incredulously, who would sign up to do this? Well, you all have, and for that we thank you. You represent us, advocate township, and work often to make our community a better place for everyone.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. President, before you read the next one, I think that anybody who is in the room there with you needs to mute their microphones. We did get a lot of feedback on your reading there. While any one person is speaking, everybody else should mute.
Thank you.
I think that will help.
The next letter is from Ben Danson, 158 Shellborne Road. "I am urging every commissioner to support the resolution submitted by Commissioner Holmes, calling for the president's resignation or removal from office. This is not a Democratic or Republican issue. It is a matter of right and wrong, legal and illegal, and democracy versus mob rule. I know that every one of you on the Board of Commissioners, regardless of party, condemns this illegal and seditious act. But your vote tonight demonstrate your commitment to the rule of law and the Constitution of the United States. Ben Danson, Social Studies Department Chair, Hencrest High School." Next letter is from Felicia Hurwitz, 348 Farwood Road. "Dear Commissioners, I write to you today in favor of a resolution to condemn the terrorists that invaded and defaced our Capitol Building, committed violence against our Capitol Police, and threatened violence against our legislators. I was watching this invasion live on television and I personally had the same sense of dread that I had during the 9/11 terrorist attacks. Had this despicable mob not been outsmarted by a few outnumbered Capitol Police and Secret Service agents, I am certain that the loss of life and disruption to our government would have been greater. The mob stated a clear intention to torture and kill our elected representatives. They carried maps, tactical gear, and weapons to achieve their evil goal. Any resolution should also censor and demand resignations from the collaborators, organizers, and enablers who have for months been seeding and tweeting the lie that our November 2020 election was fraudulent and who have suggested both implicitly and explicitly that violence would somehow undo the election of Joe Biden. These individuals, including President Donald Trump, Senator Cruz, Senator Hawley, and the Pennsylvania representatives that voted to nullify the votes of every citizen of Pennsylvania in the 2020 election, Representative Scott Perry, Representative Mike Kelly, Representative Fred Keller, Representative Dan Muser, Representative Guy Russiansthaler, Representative Lloyd Smucker, Representative John Joyce, and Representative Glenn Thompson. I suggest special opprobrium should be directed to Representative Matt Gaetz, who hours after individuals wearing fascist paraphernalia celebrating the Holocaust desecrated our Capitol, had the gall to suggest that the protest was led by anti-fascist instigators. I have some news for Representative Gaetz. Anti-fascists by definition don't support fascists. All of these named individuals have dishonored their oath of office and have colluded in the deaths that occurred owing to the events of January 6. The lawmakers who refuse to seat Jim Brewster in the PA Legislature are similarly supporting a lie that our election was corrupted, simply because they do not agree with the result. They do this in our state legislature for the same reason that Senator Hawley does it in the US Senate, to inspire distrust in our democracy so that the next time they don't like the results of an election, they can simply ignore that result and place in power the candidate of their choosing. I truly fear our country may fall to fascism. When I was a young child, my religious school spent a year studying the Holocaust. Even at the tender age of nine, I understood that a madman could scapegoat the Jewish people. I understood that some were jealous or wanted to seize material possessions that some Jewish families owned. And that one thing I could never understand is how so many people, millions of people, could be so evil or at least so callous to evil perpetuated by others. Was there something sick perhaps with the character or culture of those Germans? Well, now I know because our culture is similarly sick, even in Haverford Township. Those who stand by and give a thumbs up as our democratic processes are usurped, who stand by as babies are separated from their parents at the border, who laugh when peaceful Black Lives Matter protesters are tear gassed and beaten in the name of defending law and order, and yet who attack police when it serves their purposes, these people are all around us. Are we really so sure they wouldn't also stand by as people are arrested and taken to re-education or death camps? Because those are the stakes. If the likes of Trump becomes an autocrat in the US, we will have arrests without due process and we will have death camps. Thank you for listening and for your part in upholding the democratic process. The next comment is from Stacy O'Leary, who lives on 10B Road. "I am writing to express my support in favor of the resolution that condemns Wednesday's terrorist attack. I am very concerned about the behavior of township residents who may have participated, including the need to investigate and prosecute residents who had a hand in planning the event." The next comment is from Eric Horst, who lives at 317 North Minowa Road. "I strongly encourage all township, Haverford Township Commissioners to support Commissioner Holmes' resolution condemning the violence in our nation's Capitol this past Wednesday and calling on the immediate removal of President Donald Trump from office for directly inciting the violence at our nation's Capitol. It is vitally important that members of all parties support this resolution and stand up for the basic principles underlying America's democracy and the peaceful transition of power. In addition to supporting this resolution, I strongly urge the Republican members of this board to take the time to reconsider their ongoing relationship with the Republican Party in light of Wednesday's attack. While this attack requires bipartisan condemnation, the weight of the responsibilities for these attacks falls squarely on the shoulders of the Republican Party and goes far beyond the words of the current Republican President. This attack was preceded by months of lies about the integrity of the 2020 election repeated by Republican elected officials across this country and state. Eight out of nine members of Pennsylvania's Republican House delegation voted to overturn the will of Pennsylvania voters even after Wednesday's attack. Republican State Senator Douglas Mastriano was extensively involved in organizing the event that preceded the attacks. And former Republican State Representative Rick Saccon implicitly stated his intent to storm the Capitol on social media prior to the attacks. Furthermore, on the day prior to the attack, Republican State Majority Leader Jake Corman and the overwhelming majority of his Republican colleagues began an unconstitutional, an ongoing unconstitutional effort to refuse to seat certified winner of the Pennsylvania State Senate race. The authoritarian anti-democracy and anti-American movement that has taken root within the Republican Party can no longer be dismissed as merely a fringe element. In response to Wednesday's attacks, many Republican elected officials and everyday Republican voters from across the state have acknowledged this sad reality and decided to leave the party and become independents. For those Republicans who condemn Wednesday's attack on the Capitol and the ongoing attacks on our democracy by members of their own own party but choose to stay with the party, you must take every effort to begin purging your party of the radical authoritarian movement that has taken hold within it. On the local level, this means taking steps to investigate and determine the involvement of any currently active Republican committee members who may have participated in organizing or attending the event which led to the storm near the Capitol on Wednesday and taking steps to expel these members from your party where necessary. If Republican elected officials wish to continue their relationship with their party while still assuring the public they are truly committed to the American democratic process, the rule of law, and the peaceful transition of power, they must take decisive and immediate action to reverse the dark turn that the Republican Party has taken." We have a few more comments to go. Next one is from Chris and Erica Spangler, who live at 1016 Marchmont Avenue. "Here, Haverford Township Board of Commissioners, we are writing to support, in support of Larry Holmes' resolution regarding the January 6th attack on the US Capitol. We fully support the board in passing this resolution. It is clear that President Trump's rhetoric incited the insurrection. As defenders of the US Constitution, it is your duty to demand Vice President Pence, the Cabinet, and lawmakers pursue every possible avenue to remove him from office. He has proven again and again that he is a clear threat to our democracy and he needs to be removed from office. Secondly, though President Trump's nearing the end of his presidency, it is just as important to move forward with removal proceedings to send a clear message that such attempts to undermine our democracy will not be tolerated now or in the future." The next comment comes from Patricia McGoldrick, who lives at 112 North Drexel Avenue. "I would like to thank you, the Haverford Township Commissioners, who have decided to support the pending resolution condemning last week's attack on the Capitol. I respectfully ask any remaining members to also lend their support. While there will always be political disagreements in our country, there are times when issues under consideration are simply a matter of right versus wrong. This is one of those times. We need elected officials at all levels to use their voices to call out this behavior in order to protect the communities and value that we all hold dear. Thank you to those who have already done so." The next comment is from Katie Begandy, who lives at 201 Mill Road. "On January 6th, domestic terrorists stormed the Capitol Building in Washington DC, bringing chaos, destruction, and sadly death upon our nation's Capitol. The next day, a bomb threat forced the closure of the Michigan State Capitol, the same building that was invaded prior to, prior by a heavily armed militia. And not, let's not forget the thankfully unsuccessful plot to kidnap the governor of Michigan earlier in 2020. These and other events showcase a disturbing pattern of domestic terrorism that has emerged in the United States of America over the past year. The subtext of each attack is, dear, fill in the blank lawmaker, do what we want or else. These terrorists are emboldened and they are not done yet. I fear what is next for our country, our state, and our township. While Wednesday's event did not happen in Haverford Township, current, former, and wannabe elected officials from our home and our state alongside residents of Haverford Township had a hand in Wednesday's attack. Some attended in DC, some used social media to encourage participation, and others organized buses of people from our area to DC. This all leaves me wondering, what if this happens here? Are our state lawmakers safe? County Council, Commissioners, School Board members? Am I safe because I choose to comment publicly against domestic terrorism? I am taking a risk by lawfully speaking at tonight's meeting and yet more than fear, I feel sadness and disbelief. I am sad for the large group of Americans who have been manipulated so expertly by the blatant lies of a sitting president, by his cunning strategists, and by their allies in federal and local offices. I am in disbelief that so many lawmakers have abandoned their duties to serve the public and instead have chosen to fan these dangerous flames. For reference, I live in a bipartisan home and believe Americans need to speak more openly about different points of view without anger or judgment. We can learn much from listening and yet there is a line that I must draw in accepting another person's point of view. Fighting against threatening and overtaking elected officials crosses that line, as does abusing presidential powers by spreading falsehoods and inciting insurrection against folks who happen to disagree with you. This no longer has to do with policy disagreements along party lines. This has to do with our core values of freedom, justice, and integrity. As a registered Democrat, I was equally concerned for the safety of Vice President Mike Pence on Wednesday as I was for that of Congresswoman Mary Gay Scanlon. Our public servants do not deserve to be intimidated by an armed mob. As elected officials, I support your signing of tonight's resolution to take a firm stance against intimidation of elected officials. I ask you to do everything in your capacity to call on the Republican Party to reform and swiftly renounce fascism from local GOP committee to state officials to the President of the United States of America. I am all for a healthy political competition, whereas nothing healthy about the direction that the Republican Party has taken over the past several years. Will you sign tonight to stand with democracy, with the US Constitution, and with the people of the United States of America?" The next comment is from Jen Leath, 2928 Morris Road. "I submit my comment this evening about the unnerving, shameful, and dangerous events that took place in our nation's Capitol on the afternoon of January 6th, 2021. Events that were centered on lies, anti-Semitism, white supremacy, and the desired destruction of our democracy. I know this board to be a thoughtful, fair-minded, and principled group of individuals. And as such, it is my hope that all of you agree to a strong collective repudiation of Donald J. Trump and the defiling of our democratic institutions under his tenure, especially on January 6th, 2021. I must state that I am disappointed that a joint statement of this board to that effect was not offered sooner to the public but rather potentially being offered nearly a week after the fact. I trust this evening you will unanimously agree to a statement or resolution that strongly rebukes the events of January 6th, 2021, rebukes all those who supported and enable those events, and which adorses the removal of Donald J. Trump from the office of the presidency." The final comment is from Teresa Walther. I do not have her address. I am writing this email regarding the resolution being brought forward to the board, calling upon Donald Trump, our 45th President, to resign from his office immediately, and if he does not, then to have him forcefully removed. My question is, why are you advocating for the removal of a sitting president? President Trump has stated that there will be a peaceful transition of power. You are asking for his removal because of his so-called rhetoric and inflammatory words inciting lawless anarchists, then you must ask also for the resignations of the following: Kamala Harris, "Protesters should not let up." Nancy Pelosi, "I just don't know why there aren't uprisings all over this country. Maybe there should be." End of quotes. And Yanna Presley, "There needs to be unrest in the streets." Maxine Waters, "You get out and create a crowd, and you push back on them, and you tell them they are not welcome anymore, anywhere." End of quotes. Cory Booker, "Go to the Hill today, get up in the face of some congresspeople." And there are more. This country has lived with months of rioting, businesses being destroyed, innocent citizens being killed, while politicians defended this and did absolutely nothing about it. I believe the board should focus on the business of making Haverford Township a better community, a community that we all are proud to live in, where people of differing political beliefs can live peacefully. Your resolution is divisive, baseless, and beyond the orders of your responsibilities as township commissioners. You are not in office to represent one political party. You are in office to represent every citizen of Haverford Township, and this is not representative of every citizen. We're going to be moving on to...
Dr. Hart?
Yes?
I'm sorry, there's one additional participant who had a hand raised. Would you mind if I allowed Samantha Hand to speak?
Absolutely, I can catch my breath.
Are you okay with that?
Absolutely.
All right. Samantha Hand, I've tried to unmute you, and you can speak now if you'd like.
Hi, my name is Samantha Hand, and I reside at 9 Fairfield Road. Despite what I am here to say, I would first like to thank all of you on this board for your service to Haverford Township. Now, I do not condone the horrible events that took place in our nation's Capitol last week. I think we can all agree that when you protest violently, any meaning behind your message gets lost. That being said, I do not understand why the Haverford Commissioners are trying to pass this resolution to call on President Trump to resign. I think you all probably know that President Trump will not ever hear of this resolution and has probably never even heard of Haverford Township, which of course begs the question, what do you gain from doing this? Is it just virtue signaling? I also would like to remind you that about 11,000 residents of Haverford Township voted for President Trump in this past election. Commissioners should be aiming to represent the people they serve, not just the ones who voted for them. Your actions only serve to divide us further. We stick to local Haverford Township issues. That is what we elected you to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Berman, are there any others? I gather there is none. We will be moving on to reading the resolution next, so all the commissioners will have an opportunity to voice their views. I will say, just want to comment, that I did speak to all the commissioners on Wednesday evening, and I can tell you that they were unanimous in being appalled by the events of what had happened that day. There's been work on the resolution since that time, but it was a unanimous response from everyone. Personally, I think this country is at a crossroads, has been at a crossroads for months, and will continue to be here. We are being called to uphold our democratic tradition, democratic in that we have civic discourse, that we're not rioting in the streets, we're not attacking our Capitol. We all pledged at the beginning of this meeting to uphold the republic and the one nation and liberty and justice for all. I think that's what we all are here to do and want to see continue. I think the road ahead will be quite difficult, but let's do all we can, hope and pray that we can get there. We go ahead to item number seven, the resolution.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Mr. President, may I have the privilege of reading our resolution into the record and then moving its consideration?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, whereas each member of the Board of Commissioners of Haverford Township, Delaware County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania recalls with great pride, taking our oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America, assuming the office and performing the duties of Township Commissioner. And whereas the board will not tolerate efforts to thwart the lawful and peaceful transition of power, a hallmark of our nation, still the longest surviving and thriving democracy in the world, no matter the source of those efforts. And whereas the board condemns in the strongest way possible the irresponsible rhetoric and inflammatory vitriol with which the President of the United States incited a group of lawless anarchists to senseless violence. And whereas through baseless claims of conspiracy and irresponsible calls to take the fight to the Capitol, the President of the United States has unleashed upon the federal legislature a violent mob whose goal is the undoing of a lawfully held election and whose means are intimidation and violence, with the resulting threat on the separation of powers enshrined in our Constitution. And whereas, the board watched unfold with horror and sadness the events of the early afternoon of January 6th, 2021. And whereas the board seeks to assure the citizens of Haverford Township and all our fellow citizens in townships, cities, boroughs, counties, states, and territories across the United States of America, that their elected leaders, whether Democrat, Republican, Independent, or any political stripe, will not shrink in the face of fascistic, violent, hateful, or un-American behavior by its highest elected official, but rather will face it head-on and call it what it is: intolerable. Now therefore be it resolved that the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners of Delaware County and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania hereby calls upon Donald J. Trump, the 45th President of the United States, to resign from his office immediately. And in the event he will not do so, calls upon Michael Pence, the Vice President of the United States, the heads of the executive departments in the Cabinet, and the Congress of the United States, to take any and all lawful actions bestowed on them by the Constitution to remove Donald J. Trump from the office of the President of the United States. The quote from the Declaration of Independence, "And for support of this declaration, with a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence, we mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor this 11th day of January, 2021."
Have a second? Comments?
Dr. Hart, Mr. President, I received in email form the comments that you read earlier from Ms. Walter, and I listened to Ms. Hand's comments, and I just wanted to let you know that my response was that this is not a Democratic thing, and that will be obvious to people who watch this tonight and watch this board deal with this resolution, and that I represent, and we all represent, Democrats, Republicans, independents, and anybody who is our constituents. And the job of a representative is not to do what a majority of their constituents tell them to do, but instead to exercise their judgment. And I think it's in our judgment to take the only step we can take as a local governing body, and that is to make our voice be heard and let the President know that this conduct was intolerable, as we said in that resolution, and that it must be dealt with, and he must be removed from the most powerful position on earth. What Ms. Hurwitz said was very compelling about all the other people who have created the climate that has created the situation that we now face. But I think the President of the United States stands alone in his ability, just in these next nine days, to create such havoc and to wield such power, that that power must be taken away from him as quickly as possible in the lawful means our Constitution contemplates. That's really all I have tonight.
Any other commissioners?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. DiMillo?
I'd like to make a statement, please. First, it's in our history of the United States to allow its citizens to protest, and I would agree that peaceful protest, there is nothing wrong with that, but like all Americans, I was shocked and saddened by the storming of the United States Capitol and the loss of life. I ask that you pray for the families that have lost their loved ones and for the future of our country. On the agenda tonight, we'll be voting on this resolution demanding that the President of the United States resign from office. In the event that he refuses to do so, we believe that the Vice President shouldn't invoke any powers available to him to remove the President from office. Unfortunately, the storming of the Capitol will be ranked as one of the darkest days in the history of the United States. Every elected official has the responsibility to behave in a way that promotes unity and lead by example for the sake of our children and grandchildren who want to inherit this great nation. The most important politician, the President of the United States, must always exhibit a calm and confident demeanor. President Trump's decision to incite the crowd by telling them to march to the Capitol was reckless, irresponsible, and resulted in the death of five Americans. Because of the President's actions, I will vote to support this resolution. As a good friend reminded me, I swore to uphold the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and that is what I feel I must do here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. DiMillo. Any other commissioner?
President?
Yes?
Dan?
Go ahead. Go ahead. Yeah, I'm having trouble. I'm sorry, Dan. Mr. Segal?
Thank you. I have perhaps been as outspoken as any member of this board about hate, about the issues that arise from hate. I've addressed it locally and elsewhere. And what we saw at the Capitol was one of the most heinous examples of hate. We saw the Confederate flag. We saw people wearing a T-shirt, Camp Auschwitz, the concentration camp at the heart of the Nazis. And those symbols, while ostensibly protected by the First Amendment, do not represent what this country is, nor do I believe that Donald Trump represents what this country is, but that we must, as elected officials, speak out. We had someone who said, "Why are we speaking?" Because it matters not where we are or who we represent. We swore an oath to uphold the Constitution, and we all have that obligation, whether as township commissioners, members of Congress, or as President of the United States. Our high school requires our students to read the book by Eli Wiesel, the concentration camp Holocaust survivor, his book Night. And Eli Wiesel, who had throughout his 87 years spoken out about the need to speak out, has a quote that really sort of summarizes why we and everyone needs to speak out and why this resolution is so timely and so necessary. When he accepted the Nobel Peace Prize, he said that we must always take sides. Neutrality helps the oppressor, never the victim. Silence encourages the tormentor, never the tormented. Sometimes we must interfere. When human lives are in danger, when human dignity is in jeopardy, national borders and sensitivities become irrelevant. Whenever men or wherever men or women are persecuted because of their race, religion, or political views, that place must, at that moment, become the center of the universe. And the United States did during that fateful day and those events. This is a very important resolution. I thank Commissioner Holmes for taking the lead in drafting it, and to my colleagues, I ask your support for this. I thank you for those. Mr. DiMillo, your eloquent words. This is important, and it's an important statement for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Oliva? Mario, you're muted. Can you...Mario, start over.
As many of you know, I am the son of immigrants. In 1967, my parents and five older siblings fled communism and Fidel Castro's Cuba. I was raised to believe the United States was a land of freedom and justice for all. I came of age politically in the area of Ronald Reagan. My family believed in his conservative message of less government and strong alliances with our allies. My family also believed President Reagan's message of America as a welcoming place for others, as a beacon of hope, symbolized in the Statue of Liberty. Growing up poor with Spanish-speaking parents in white middle-class Havertown, I know the sting of being an outsider and the pain of prejudice. I know what it feels like to be considered an other. Donald Trump considers others to be his enemies, to be mocked and mistreated. What we witnessed on January 6th was a violent demonstration of all that has gone wrong with our country under the leadership of Donald Trump. Division, mistrust, and fear. We often talk about the times we live in, but the times are only as good or bad as the people living in those times. If we want to change the times, we need to change the people. I support this resolution because it is abundantly clear to me that we need to hold our leadership accountable for what they do. May God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. McCoskey?
I think what happened last Wednesday is going to require months, probably years, of self-reflection on the part of all of us. It's going to be needed to be investigations as to how and why it occurred. There's going to be need to be investigations into the government's response and where it was lacking, and there's plenty of time for that. Tonight, it's pretty simple, though. Sitting President encouraged the storming of the Capitol. The Capitol was overrun, created an unimaginable national security risk with the Congress, all present and the Vice President, and five Americans are now dead, including a Capitol police officer. Donald Trump should resign now or be removed. There's no rationalization or justification for what actually happened in the United States of America on Wednesday last. I fully support this resolution. Except the limitations of our position, we took an oath, we all took an oath in this position. This is something we can and should do. Pray for our country, desperately hope our leaders can put country over an allegiance to a man in the coming months.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Wilks, sir?
Yeah, I just want to add my personal statement I posted online earlier. This is untenable to me. Having served in the military, having respected our police force... force, and seeing the rights that we all stood for to allow anybody to speak. But the violence and the inciting of those to commit violence is untenable, and we must act to at least, even if we can't do anything, we still have to voice our opinion and let people know that we are against violence and criminal acts. And it's just unconscionable what has happened by the leadership and some of the, some of the leadership of the Republican Party as well. It's just, I denounce the actions, and I can't say it any more eloquently than what's been stated in some of the comments this evening and what some of my colleagues have already done, but just to add my opinion, strong opinion towards that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinn?
Yes, I've heard what everybody has said, and I've heard this past week. I've got all of these emails, and they're all up for reading because a lot were from really good friends and who I think the world of on each side. And then I heard what Senator Pat Tanumi said, and I had to agree. And I'm proud to admit, one of the first on this board to denounce the events the other day when I wrote my post online. I hear that we need to do things, or locally, but sometimes you have to do tough things that are uncomfortable, and I will support this.
Commissioner Lewis?
In 2016, again, at the time, I chose not to support Donald Trump and his candidacy for President because I felt incorrect. And in fact, it's far worse than I ever imagined. And I've actually switched to becoming independent as a... So I would agree, I would reflect back on the previous impeachment trial where only Mitt Romney stood tall, stood on principle, and voted to convict the President of those offenses. And I find these offenses, most recently last week, is even more offensive and egregious. So I will be enthusiastically supporting this resolution.
Are there any other comments? Which case, Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. Demilio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Resolution passes nine nothing. And thank Commissioner Holmes for drafting the resolution and to all of you for being unanimous in support of this. We have a lot of work to do, and this is a small step on our part. Before we go forward in the meeting, if Chief Viola is available, if we could get the police crime update?
Thank you, Commissioner Chase, report for December of 2020. We had nine arrests, zero juvenile arrests, 38 traffic citations were issued, seven non-traffic citations, 34 written warnings, and 136 parking tickets. Zero robberies, zero burglaries, one burglary attempt in the 2400 block of Irwin when the homeowner found a broken window. K9 was deployed with negative results. We had a motor vehicle theft from the SEPTA line at the Orbor Junction lot on a utilizing person-to-person tour rental agency, rental, which is a personal rental. The car was tracked to New York City. NYPD did do a search of the vehicle, and arrest was made. We had two bicycle thefts, 1,000 block at Darby, 1,200 block at West Sister Pike. The suspect was confronted by the father of the owner of the bicycle, and the bike was confirmed belonging to the victim. Suspect was arrested, charged with theft, and we had three K9 reports for the month. No vehicles entered.
People are either locking their cars, or it's too cold for... Thank you.
We'll say it's Christmas here.
Yes. Moving on, resolution for the reappointment of David Berman, Township Manager, Secretary.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Siegel.
Motion to reappoint David R. Berman to a two-year contract as Township Manager and Secretary effective January 14th, 2021 to January 13th, 2023.
Seconded by Commissioner Quinn. Any comments?
Yeah, Dave, he's done a tremendous job for us since he arrived, and I appreciate everything that he's doing to make the township even better. So thanks for your efforts, Dave.
I think this past year has exemplified his skills, and I think it's pretty much a no-brainer based upon leading us through this pandemic and some other items that we've had last year. It's been a great job, so thank you.
Yes, Dave, thank you for all your help over the past year since I joined the board. You were always there to help me out, and you are a great part of this township.
Dave is the guy who had to persuade the rest of them even to go with your candidacy. I'm just really happy it turned out like this.
I was not on the team at that time.
I'm messing. You were the easiest hire we ever did, and bravo.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Siegel.
Yeah. As I've told Mr. Berman, since he came on board, and I was one who heartily supported his hiring, he has faced more challenges than anyone could have imagined from controversies with, at the library, with fire department, with the pandemic, and many other things that continue to occur. And he has handled them all with professionalism, with a calm, and, you know, my view is that the Township Manager is the one who speaks for the township and that we are those who give him authority to do so. And he has done so wonderfully, and I am thrilled that I was able to be the person who sponsored the motion because he has served this township so well.
I'd like to just add, when I first, Dave was first brought, I thought he was a little young, a little bit not ready for it, but he proved me wrong. He's going through a really difficult time in the township and gotten us through it, and he's done a great job. Dave, I really appreciate all your work, and thank you.
There are no other comments. Mr. Berman, if you'd call the roll.
Mr. Demilio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Absolutely, yes. Congratulations.
Thank you and the board for the confidence you've placed in me. I do need to report that the next item on the agenda requires some clarification and either needs to be tabled or removed from the agenda.
Yeah, motion to table from Commissioner Quinn. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And we'll move on to item number nine, Township Manager update. Mr. Berman?
Again, I thank you for the confidence you've placed in me. I can assure you, no matter what happens, I and the township staff are committed to serving every resident, no matter who you are, no matter what party you are, and no matter what your ideology is. We're going to do our best to collect the trash, fight crime, plow the snow, offer rec programs, all of the things that we do as a township. One of the things that we've been asked about most recently is the vaccine. And when are we going to get our vaccine? I could tell you that I have not had the vaccine yet. I believe I'm in priority group or Phase 1B. So let me just run through the phases real quick, and then if Chief McCants has anything to add, we'll ask him to do so. So Priority Group, or Phase 1A, is, represents the coroner, the medical examiner, funeral staff, EMS providers, healthcare personnel, long-term care residents. Phase 1B, clergy and other essential support for houses of worship, correction staff, county and municipal administration staff, educators, education staff, facilities and sanitation staff, firefighters, food and agricultural staff, grocery store staff, individuals caring for children or adults in early childhood and adult aid programs, individuals in congregant settings not otherwise specified as long-term care facilities, law enforcement, manufacturing staff, persons 75 years and older, transit staff, U.S. Postal Staff. And it goes from there. That group that I just described, Phase 1B, here in Delaware County, has not yet begun receiving vaccinations. We're being notified to go ahead and sign up for them, but we have not been notified that we're going to receive them just yet. Chief McCants, if you're on, could you give us a little bit more insight about that, please?
You're muted.
There we go. Yes, it's, I think it's unrealistic to believe that everybody will hit the same phase at the same time. Obviously, it has a lot to do with flow of vaccine and material and the logistics and just the sheer volume of people. But currently, Phase 1A is nearing completion, is my understanding, in that most people have gotten their first vaccine, who are healthcare workers, who are frontline, hands-on people, which is essentially what 1A was always about, those who are providing treatment and those who were directly affected, whether it be somebody like the medical examiner who's not providing treatment but providing answers, or people who are doing waste management of products directly associated with patient care and are at risk. 1B will be starting next, and in some places has already started. In this area, we do see some flow into nursing homes and that sort of area that has been well underway, but that was under slightly different control in that the federal government used some of the existing pharmacy systems as a supply chain because these places already had a reliance on the supply chain system for medical goods. So they got on that route. Delaware County, the initial doses were distributed through medical centers, and they were in control of the passing out of that. Some of the slack was picked up by the Chester County Department of Health, and they also provided vaccinations to the EMS workers and what have you. The very next phase, which we are just, like I said, just starting to kind of get into, includes essential workers like firefighters, police officers, and all the other people that you mentioned, and people who are at high risk. So it is happening. I know it's so very hard. We were all wondering, like, when's it going to happen? When are we going to hear something? There are no hard dates. Understand that this is everybody's first time going through this. So, you know, there are some growing pains, there are some missteps, everybody wants to get it right, we're trying to get it right. But I think it'll start to pick up speed now because so many essential workers, so many, let me rephrase it, so many EMS workers, so many healthcare workers are being vaccinated so that now they can in turn do vaccinations themselves. And that just picks up the speed of the whole process. So just about every paramedic I know, every practitioner I know has powered up and is at least on a list to go somewhere to be called up to start giving vaccines to the general public when that happens. There is a plan in place. They have not passed that on to our level yet, but I'm sure that that is at the county emergency management level. I hope that answered it.
Thanks.
So Jim?
Yes, sir.
Maybe you could address the general population. Where do they stand in line? And how do you foresee the vaccine being distributed? Is it going to be through pharmacies and hospitals and even grocery store chains? Or what do you see? And second question would, actually, request would be that maybe we as a township could, and you could take the lead on this date, but provide ongoing updates. I think people are really interested in this topic as they were, as they continue to be in COVID, but I think they're interested in the vaccine, when it's coming, when it might be available. Even if we don't know anything, let's tell them we don't know anything. I think the more we tell people, the better, the more comfortable they become. So anyway, sorry to interrupt your answer, but...
No, it's fine.
Can you do that for us on a regular, every two or three weeks?
Absolutely.
Or something, and you could send us emails that we could get out to our residents so they just know, even if it's nothing to report. I think we need to tell people there's nothing to report, but here's what's coming, here's what to expect. Okay, sorry.
No, I understand completely. Understand, what I understand is there will be use of pharmacies, there will be use of pharmacy chains, and it makes sense in that they do have the facilities to store the vaccination. They do have the, even things like a loading dock for a truck to pull in and offload the stuff, and a pharmacist to take responsibility for the care of the stock. At some point, when we get to a much larger amount of people, it will exceed that capability as it accelerates even more. And I think at that point, we'll start to see areas, not unlike testing. I think testing's probably a good example of this, that we will have public places where people will be able to come to and maybe just get vaccinated in their vehicle. I don't know if that's on the plan because there is the concern that you've just received the medication, and there has to be a waiting period to make sure that there is no reaction to it. Understand, too, that this is a series of two shots right now, that depending on if you get the Moderna or Pfizer, there's a several-day difference between the two, but I believe the Moderna for, that I received was 26 days. So I had the first one, I had the other one at the end of this month. So my wife received the Pfizer, and it's a lower period of time, but, you know, in disclosure, the first people who are getting the second vaccine are having not strong reactions, but more reaction than they expected. And that makes sense because you're building antibodies, and that's a good sign. So now when you get the second vaccination, your body recognizes that this product has shown up again and is building a kind of an attack towards it. It's all part of it, it's how it's supposed to work, but it needs to be recognized that there'll be at least some additional vigilance over the second vaccination. And we also have to make sure everybody gets the second one. It's just a two-do's thing, it's not a one-and-done, at least not yet. But I will absolutely let you know what the plan is, and I do believe there will be, if you remember back to H1N1, we did some big gymnasiums and some other places where people could come in and stay apart from each other and get their vaccination. So it's a big work in progress, but it is moving at a very rapid rate. And we absolutely will give you regular updates to release and post them on the township website as well.
And also, maybe, Jim, you could, I sent you a copy of an email that I received from Acme Markets, touting the fact that they were going to have vaccines, that I thought, my initial reaction was it was a scam. So I don't know, we should keep our eye out for potential scams as well. I'm not saying that that one was in particular, but it seemed pretty unusual to get an Acme about vaccines.
That may have been an overactive marketing department, I think. Yeah, they'll probably get the vaccine if they have a pharmacy, but they shouldn't be giving the impression of getting it in the next 48 hours or anything. It's a longer road than that.
We could keep our eye out for scams, that'd be helpful because...
Absolutely.
Like, everybody's got a scam going.
Yep.
Yeah, Commissioner Lewis, I think we could say that no one's going to call you up and ask for your personal information about the vaccine, so...
I would agree with that, but they get you to click the link, you know?
Yeah, I know.
And I want...
I just heard about a phone call scam.
I want everybody to be reassured to this is a free vaccination. I want everybody to be reassured to this is a free vaccination, that that was worked out, you do not need to be insured, you do not need cash upfront or anything, that it is payment-free. You go and you get your vaccine, which is covered by taxpayer money.
Thank you.
Sure. Dr. Hart, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you very much.
Chief McCants, thanks for doing it.
A pleasure.
Moving on to item number 10, the approval of minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. D'Amelio.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of Sorry.
December 14th, Stephen.
Item number 10.
Oh, is it 10?
Item number 10, December 14th.
Oh, I don't have 10, believe it or not, on here. Why don't somebody else read it? I can't find it.
Mr. President.
Commissioner Quinn, I think is ready to read it.
Could be long. Budget for regular meeting, or a minutes of, December 14th to approve the budget for regular meeting minutes of December 14th.
There, second. Seconded by Commissioner Holmes, I'm gonna say.
Yes.
That was good. That was good.
Mr. Berman, can you call a roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 11, approval of warrants.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we approve warrant number one of 2021 totaling $4,292,283.14, comprising the general sewer fund payroll for December 10th of 2020 in the amount of The general sewer fund payroll for December 24th, 2020 in the amount of $660,241.9. General sewer fund payroll for January 7th, 2021 in the amount of $1,288,881.18. General fund disbursements number one in the amount of $1,079,463.34. Sewer fund disbursements number one in the amount of $115,530.81. Community development block grant fund disbursement number one of 2021 in the amount of $83,918.21. Capital project fund disbursement number one of 2021 in the amount of $69,820.66 on a credit card statement ending December 27th, 2020 in the amount of $7,772.13.
There, second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Wexler.
President, our township auditor has been through these warrants individually. Any questions that his review raised were answered to his satisfaction by township personnel? And he has recommended these warrants be approved, as do I.
Comments? Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 12 is ordinance number P28-2020, a second reading of a traffic ordinance.
Mr. President.
Mr. Aliva.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P28-2020, establishing traffic restrictions on the following highway. Special purpose parking in front of 402 Steel Road and in front of 2945 Oxford Road. Parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times on Crest Road, the north side from Dover Road to 1.40 feet west.
There, second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Wexler. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 13 is an ordinance amending Chapter 136 Police Services. This is the second reading.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Item number 13, ordinance number P29-2021, amending Chapter 136 Police Services, second reading, motion to adopt second reading of ordinance number P29-2021, further amending Chapter 136 Police Services. Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Quinn, I believe. Any discussion? If not, Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 14 is an ordinance amending Chapter 30 Pensions and Employee Benefits. This is also a second reading.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we adopt second reading of ordinance P30 of 2021, further amending Chapter 30 Pensions and Employee Benefits.
There, second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Aliva.
Mr. President, this was discussed fairly substantially at our December meeting, and I know our Assistant Township Manager and Finance Director, Ms. Cuthbertson, explained it, and I recommend we pass it once again.
Anyone else? If not, Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 15 is an ordinance in regards to the purchase of 1744 Vermont Road. This is also a second reading.
Mr. President.
Mr. Aliva.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P31-2021, authorizing the acquisition of 1744 Vermont Road, Havertown, PA, subject to the review and acceptance by the township solicitor of the agreement and further subject to the approval of the township manager of the final agreement.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lewis. Any comments?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
My only comment is to say that I'm sorry you won't continue your string of unanimous things tonight. I won't repeat anything I've said from previous meetings. I won't be voting for this ordinance, but I don't need to say anything else about it.
Thank you. Thank you, Larry.
We'll get unanimous approval on that, anyway.
Guys, you just remember I gave you that, okay?
No, we won't, we won't forget.
I absolutely appreciate it.
You'll be nostalgic for it, I'll tell you that, yeah.
Any other comments? Mr. Berman, could you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
No.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
No.
Mr. Wexler.
No.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Good streak.
Moving to item number 16, ordinance number P1-2021, a lease of the Havertford Township Free Library. This is the first reading.
Mr. President, a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance P1-2021, authorizing the lease of certain township grounds, Havertford Free Township Library, Havertford Township Free Library.
Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Aliva. I don't know if Mr. Berman or Ms. Cuthbertson, do you want to comment at all?
Or if you recall when we've talked about borrowing for the library renovations that are intended to happen in the future, we talked about the need, on the advice of our bond council, to have a formal lease in place. This lease does not change the relationship in any material way, there's still no rent exchange or anything like that, all the responsibilities remain the same, but he did feel it was important to have a formal lease in place since we would essentially be borrowing for the benefit of a not-for-profit entity such as the library. So this draft lease has been vetted by the library board, and there's still a little bit of tweaking to do, but you'll read in the ordinance that this is subject to approval by the solicitor and the township manager as well as the library board. But this is 99% finished and, as I said, on the advice of bond council, we want to have this in place well in advance of the bond issue.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Are we under a time constraint to do a, give an approval on something that's not completed?
No, and I really could say this is 99.9% completed, especially on any material issues. There were some thes and ands being added and moved around, but as with any lease, everything is subject to township solicitor and township manager being in agreement.
This is also the first reading. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 17, document destruction.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we adopt Resolution Number 2202 of 2021, that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Havertford County of Delaware, come with the Pennsylvania, according to the Municipal Records Manual, hereby authorizes the disposition of public records.
Seconded by Commissioner Siegel. Any discussion? I think this is a routine yearly resolution. If there's no comments, Mr. Berman, could you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 18 is a Resolution Number 2203-2021, a comprehensive fee schedule.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we adopt Resolution 2203 of 2021, approving Havertford Township's comprehensive fee schedule.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. D'Amelio. Comments?
Mr. President.
Yes.
We have been, we have all been provided with a redline version of this document to show those things that are changing, the important things that aren't changing, our professional fees, hourly rates for our various professionals are not changing, there are changes associated with building construction. If anyone wants to discuss those in particular, we can, but for the most part, we are adopting a schedule with few to no changes from last year.
Any other comments? Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 19 is the 2021 mowing contract.
I'll make the motion to authorize the township manager to enter into an agreement with Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the 2021 mowing season.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Quinn. Comments? Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis. Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Agenda item number 20 is our Delcora Act 537 update.
Mr. President, motion to adopt Resolution 2206-2022, one, that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Havertford, Delaware County, hereby adopt and submit to the Department of Environmental Protection for its approval as an update of the official plan of the Township of Havertford, the above referenced 537 Plan update. The Township of Havertford hereby assures the Department of the complete and timely implementation of the said plan as required by law, Section 5 Pennsylvania Sewage Facilities Act as amended.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Aliva. I know, Mr. Berman, do you want to make any comments on this?
I'll ask Mr. Penotti to weigh in on that.
Of the board members, back in September, we passed a similar resolution. The Delcora is transferring their assets to Aqua, so the ownership will be transferred. What we're being asked to do is approve what's called the 537 Plan, the Sewer Facilities Plan that represents that transfer of ownership. The difference between what we approved in September and now is the DEP requires public comment on any 537 Plan. The September document by Delcora was posted and adopted, submitted to DEP, and then the public comment was added, and they're required to respond, include public comment and respond to it in the update. This, this transfer of ownership does not affect any way we operate our system. We're not a direct customer of Delcora, we're actually a direct customer of RGM on one side and Upper Darby on the other side. It won't affect any of our planning, any of our sewage facilities planning, any of our combined sewer issues, any, any of our response and maintenance of our system. So for us, it should be, it will be business as usual.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? If not, Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler. Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 21 is a professional consultant fees.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes.
I need to correct myself. The earlier fee list was for a lot of the other services the township provides, but this, Resolution 2208 particularly deals with our professional staff, and that is Resolution 2208-2021, establishing a general schedule for reimbursement of fees, cost charges, and expenses of Havertford Township's professional consultants.
There, second.
Second.
It reflects no changes from last year.
Second from Dr., Mr. McCluskey. There are no questions, Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 22 is a multimodal transportation fund, proposed park and ride facility, and pedestrian improvements.[1762.88] Could I ask someone to please, to move it, please?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
As I move we adopt resolution 2209 of 2021, requesting a time extension from the Commonwealth Financial Authority for a proposed park-and-ride facility and pedestrian improvements along Caricon Drive between Mill Road and Beechwood Drive, and further designates David R. Berman, Township Manager, and Amy Cuthbertson, Assistant Township Manager, as the official to execute all revised documents.
Second.
Second by Mr. Aliva. This is a, we had gotten this grant in the past, we're just asking for an extension because of, partly probably infected by COVID in getting SEPTA and PennDOT to work with us on this. Hopefully, this is a project that can get started this year, and maybe by the time the park is done, people will be using SEPTA again. There's no comments? If we could, Mr. Berman, if you could call the roll?
Mr. Demilio?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes. Item number 23, Pennsylvania Small Water and Sewer Resolution.
Motion to adopt-
Mr. McCluskey.
Motion to adopt number 2210, 2021, requesting permission to repurpose the remaining grant monies with, within the Small Water and Sewer Grant received from the Commonwealth Financial Authority to replace an existing sanitary sewer line, and furthermore, requests a time extension to complete the associated work, and further designates David R. Berman, Township Manager, and Amy M. Cuthbertson, Assistant Manager, as the officials to execute all revised documents.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wexler. Any comments? Being none, Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. Demilio?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes. Item number 24, four would be the ad hoc, a resolution on the ad hoc solar committee. Mr. Holmes?
No, legal. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the township solicitor to file an appeal to the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas.
Mr. Wexler, we had voted in the beginning to place this resolution, so we're gonna, let's finish the resolutions first.
Solar ad hoc committee.
Yes.
If, I'm assuming that we are following numerical order, so this would be resolution 2211 of 2021, and it is for the establishment of an ad hoc solar commission. If you'd like, Mr. President, it's not particularly long, it's a little long. Would you like me to read it? I think this is only distributed this afternoon.
Yes, please, go ahead and read it.
Whereas the Board of Commissioners allocated funds for the solar powered project in the 2021 budget, whereas the Board of Commissioners pursuant to Haverford Township Code may establish ad hoc commissions as they deem necessary for a specific and temporary purpose, and whereas the Board of Commissioners seeks to establish an ad hoc solar commission to assist the Board in effectuating the solar powered project adopted in the 2021 budget, whereas the mission of the AHSC will be to gather information about solar equipment, providers, builders, types of equipment, and examples of other successful projects, and to construct a project description further recommending the first solar project to be undertaken by the township to the Board of Commissioners at a future meeting. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Haverford hereby establishes an ad hoc solar commission for the purpose of recommending the first solar project to be undertaken by the township. Be it further resolved that the AHSC will be comprised of the following. One, three members of the public to be nominated and seconded by a commissioner respectively, and voted on by the entire board. A member of the public nominated and seconded by a commissioner must be appointed by a majority of the board members voting at a properly scheduled meeting. Two, one current member of the Environmental Advisory Committee to be designated by the Environmental Advisory Committee in a role separate from three public members. And three, three members of the Board of Commissioners appointed by the President of the Board of Commissioners, provided that at least one of the members must serve on the Finance Committee, and at least one of the members must serve on the Property Committee. Members of the AHSC shall serve until the construction of the first township's solar project unless any such member resigns or is removed by a majority vote of the Board of Commissioners prior to the termination of the committee, the commission. Place in the AHSC previously held by someone removed by the Board prior to the committee's termination shall be filled in the same manner in which the position was first filled, resolved this 11th day of January 2021, Township of Haverford.
There are second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Aliva.
Sorry, Larry, can I just add, could we, you have somebody, you have a member of the Property Committee and a member of the Finance Committee, can we have a member of the EAC on, on that committee also?
We do. So one of the members is to be, is to be lent to us by the EAC, at the choice of the EAC to take one of those people, they won't, they won't step off the EAC, but they will participate in the meetings of the ad hoc solar commission.
This will-
And the difference between last week and this week, I added one more commissioner to the list in part, so I could make an odd number of people in this commission, so we'd never have a split board. And number two, I thought with three commissioners and seven members, it would be hard for the commissioners to be outnumbered, not impossible, but hard for them to be outnumbered in the recommendations of this commission. Again, of course, it is advisory, and as was discussed last week, this in no way abrogates the transparency with which we expect to do this project, and it certainly will not stand in the way or the place of public comment, which will always be welcome at any meeting where we take official action to undertake one of these projects, whether it is signing a contract to a builder, purchasing the equipment, or undertaking the financing necessary to do the project. So I, I'll answer any questions anybody has. I only know slightly more than everybody else does about this, but I would recommend that we adopt this resolution and form this commission.
Mr. Holmes, I wonder if you would accept one change in your resolution. As you know, I've been the liaison to EAC for the last three years. I've had a lot of discussions with members of that board and advisors to that board who have been involved with solar projects in the township and within the county and in the area. Had discussions with them over the weekend, and many of them are, there is some concern that there is actually a wealth of people who have information, and that perhaps we might include more than three residents. I would, my suggestion would be, change the resolution that we could add up to five residents, the three commissioners who are appointed could decide if they wanted to do that, but we could at least get input from other individuals. I wonder if you would accept that, that change?
Yeah, I suspect I will. The idea would be that no fewer than three and no more than five?
Absolutely.
So would you have a mind to add? It would be, obviously, at the recommendation, any commissioner can raise and second these, these folks, or move and second these folks for consideration. Do you, do you want to stay with one member of the Environmental Advisory Commission as a member of this?
Yes, I think that's fine.
Okay. I have no problem with that addition to the commission. I don't know who seconded this.
Mary, I, I didn't, yeah, no, that's good. I'm okay with that.
Yeah, my only suggestion is we stay consistent with our other committees and just call it the ad hoc solar advisory committee instead of a commission. Commission-
Sure.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, too. Sounds good.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Lewis.
I just would like to throw my name into consideration to serve as the third commissioner on that committee.
I think that's very appropriate, considering you, you brought Victor Denne to our meeting. I, I certainly would expect to have you on that committee.
While we are still, we have not yet voted on the resolution, but we might as well talk since Commissioner Lewis brought up the composition. As the resolution indicates, Mr. President, you would be charged with the obligation of assigning those board members to this commission. Obviously, Mr. Lewis has volunteered. I would suggest to you that sometime between now and before our next meeting, you either seek volunteers or press people into service for this, for these two positions. But what I would like to do tonight, if we are, if we are all in favor of passing this resolution, is there are three members of the public that I would like to raise for consideration for our evaluation tonight. They are not mysteries, these are folks whose identities I, I first raised at the December meeting, and if I didn't repeat their names again last week, I think you all know who I was talking about, and that was basically the, the three leaders of the discussion from our, our solar group this summer, including Mr. Denne and Ms. Baxter and Ms. Leith. So, again, I don't mean to get ahead of us or jinx us, but it is my hope that that will be the second part of, of this, the consideration of this resolution right now, is that we would actually go to the nomination and consideration of a couple candidates.
That's so fine with me, are we, the rest of the board, any comments?
And then the concept would be that if there were, since we're saying now up to five, two others can be offered either at the next meeting or at some other time?
Yeah, I think we're definitely going to require a vote at the regular meeting, and this would, at a regularly scheduled meeting, but this would give in the next month the opportunity for anyone to approach any one of us, or for us to seek out anyone else who we think would belong on this commission, and we have space for two more. Wouldn't it make more sense that we, now, once we pass it, don't we have an obligation to advertise and seek volunteers? Instead of coming across tonight, like we've got a fait accompli, you're coming up with the resolution and then three members right away that we're already in pocket when we haven't advertised it to the general public, and we've said that there are three to five positions for the general public. So I, I just don't want to give the perception to the public that we're, we're forming this commission, committee, and we've already got the three people that you initially outlined, so that's the impression you just gave me, anyway. No, I appreciate that, and I, and, and, Mr. Wexler, you're not wrong. While I don't necessarily want people to get the impression, as you described it, I've, I've been pretty straightforward as we've considered this, that it really was the presentation of that group that spurred us to action toward the putting the solar project in our budget, and I, I have from the first conversations about forming this commission expressed that I think those three candidates are the most obvious candidates for the job. Anybody else who's interested in it, who's watched any of these meetings, I would trust might have brought themselves to our attention, but the fact that we have two more spaces, to me, should alleviate some of the concern that we just created a commission and filled it and gave people no opportunity to be part of it. However, just one vote on this, and I'd consider whatever you and my colleagues think. I, I was anxious to get this underway so that we could gather information in January and really hit the ground running with this, so I leave it up to you and my colleagues. I certainly appreciate your enthusiasm for that, but I think if we're going to make it open to the public, we should do that, that's all.
Yeah, Mr. Holmes, I would suggest that we pass your resolution. I will, by the end of the week, have three of you named to the commission would enable you to actually start meeting now, you, even without appointing residents, we could, you can bring them into the conversation, and the three, whoever the three commissioners are could come back next month, and we could make this official with whatever residents we wanted to officially appoint. I don't think there's anything stopping you now from meeting.
I don't have any objection to that. I, I will, I will enlist the, the assistance of the ones we discussed, as well as would be very interested in, in knowing who the EAC, you know, thinks are particularly qualified to help us in this as well, and so I, I don't, I don't have a problem with us not filling these slots tonight, provided we're all comfortable passing the resolution and formulating this, this, this committee tonight. Sure.
Any other comments? And Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. Demilio?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. President, can we put out, I guess, on our website or through social media that we will encourage any applications of anybody who would like to serve on the solar ad hoc advisory committee?
Yeah, we'll, we'll take care of that. Great.
Agenda item now number 25, legal.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the township solicitor to file an appeal to the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas in the matter of Upper Darby Township Zoning Hearing Board, case number 8-2 of 2020, Post Starbucks at 5001 Township Line Road, Drexel Hill, Pennsylvania.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Quinn. Any discussion? Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. Demilio?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
No.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes. Item number 26, purchases, parcel rec.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the purchase of 129,879 square feet of replacement field turf from FieldTurf under CoStar's contract 14 hyphen 173 in the amount of $450,000.
There are second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wexler. Any discussion? Just would comment that nearly $200,000 of this money comes from the user fees from those that are, the teams that use the, teams and coaches that use the turf pay a fee, and this is where their money's going to, the keeping the turf in good, you know, replacing it, trying to keep it in condition. Mr. Berman, could you call the roll?
Mr. Demilio?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes. Next item is Police Department vehicles.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the purchase of three 2021 Chevrolet Tahoe police vehicles from Andrew Chevrolet, Elizabeth Town, Pennsylvania, under PA CoStar's contract 26, in the amount of $132,780.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Quinn. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Commissioner McCluskey.
We, I believe we usually budget for four police cars, if I'm not mistaken, correct, Chief?
That's correct, yes, Commissioner.
And is, is there any update on, and we've been talking about it for a while, the possibility of an electric vehicle?
Yes. Yeah, we, we, we've had extensive conversation with the manager of Public Works and, and Amy in reference to possibly getting a full electric vehicle. One of the issues that we have accounted with a full electric vehicle is cost, the limited amount of time we could use a car, could be a 24-hour-a-day use of a vehicle, and one of the vehicles, full electric vehicles, that would meet our needs is some police departments have been using, have been Tesla's. The cost obviously would be a little higher, probably $10,000 to $12,000 more, and we thought at this time, with curtailed spending, it would be prudent to go with a full electric vehicle while the jury is still out on full electric vehicle police departments. We have some research that we've done, there are police departments that do use them and are very happy with them, but they are in limited use. So right now, we're going to go back in the next month, hopefully come back at the next meeting and have more information on the hybrid vehicles. Keep in mind, we got away from Ford Explorers a number of years ago, went to a full-size Chevy Tahoe for safety purposes and to carry all the equipment. So we're going to look at a Ford Explorer- So we're going to look at a Ford Explorer hybrid vehicle as a patrol vehicle, hopefully this year. So we'll have more information, do a little more research on it, and hopefully have something on the agenda for next month.
Okay, but buying the three now leaves us have budgeted one extra that we can work with.
That's correct, yes.
With that information.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Any other discussion? Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Humiliated Larry?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes. Item number 27, contract awards, Public Works.
Make the motion to award the Green Valley Road sewer replacement contract to McKenney Construction of Media, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $67,000, subject to finalizing the temporary access easement, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. D'Amelio. Any discussion? Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Humiliated Larry?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes. Item number 28, 2021 appointments. These are follow-ups from the reorg meeting, the Environmental Advisory Committee to your term for Ward One.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Very honored to place on the committee Noel Smythe. Noel's a very knowledgeable in climate action plans, and I've met with him several times, and he's going to be a great asset. Congratulations.
He's also very knowledgeable in solar aspects as well. And in Ward Two?
Yeah, I'd like to reappoint Allison Carpenter.
The Grange Estate, we've run into, last week, we did nominate three people to the Grange Estate, and we had hoped to be able to expand it to five. We've learned that in order for us to do that, actually, we have to get the Grange to change their rules and to accept additional members. So Commissioner Quinn?
Sorry, I will be talking to Fran this week about that and get on board with that.
So once things are settled from the Grange point of view, then we can return to this. And what I would suggest, we did appoint three people last week. We have two others that I would expect that we'll be able to appoint, but I don't think we can do it at this point.
Sure, the Grange will be thrilled to have them. So I'm sure they'll be fine with us.
Next is the Senior Citizens Advisory, a one-year term. Mr. D'Amelio, do you have anybody?
I have to pass.
Okay. Mr. Aliva?
Jack Dougherty?
Jack Dougherty. Mr. Siegel?
I already appointed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think it's me.
Commissioner McCluskey, yeah.
I'm going to pass till February, Jerry.
Okay. And Ward Seven?
I think I would try and find somebody else out of the emails.
Okay, and again, I'll tell you that I have five people in my ward who have offered, so if, um, next, we're moving on to expand, it's a discussion. We were going to have a discussion of expanding two of our boards, Parks and Rec and Health Advisory.
Chairman, Mr. President, may I ask you a question? We have, how many on the Parks and Rec board right now?
Nine members.
And we want to expand that beyond nine?
I think that one of the issues during our interviews, I think we had probably 10 people apply to be on Parks and Rec. They were all excellent. And we, you know, want to encourage our residents to participate in our local government. And so we felt, you know, we were keeping people out. People would, you know, some of the people that we did not appoint actually had sort of unique backgrounds that we felt that possibly expanding the board by a couple of members might enable us to get more citizens involved.
I understand. I just think that what, you see how it is for us, we have nine commissioners. I just think it's, it can get really, I don't know, too crowded. I certainly appreciate residents that wanted to serve. Certainly, they could attend a meeting and voice suggestions, but I think my personal belief, and it's just me, that, you know, nine is fine for all the boards, really, but I was just making.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Holmes?
Sorry, Mr. Wexler, did you want to go first?
Yeah, I think one of the things that became clear to me was representation of people, younger people as well as some elderly people, that wanted to make their feelings known about specific areas. With only nine, we're not getting a good cross-section. In other words, I don't know if there was anybody from, say, the Fifth Ward that was commenting, putting inputs on the polo field versus heavy use of Westgate and Hilltop in my area. So it was kind of getting shouted out. So what we came up with was maybe it would be a great idea to get a cross, a bigger cross-section of not only diversity throughout the township, but also age groups, because it was different opinions. It was one senior that had some great ideas for improving the parks for senior use, and then one young mother with three younger kids had some great ideas for not only playground equipment, but some of the nice things that could be there. So it was just a way to get more advice into, you know, Brian's back pocket. So I don't know whether having 15 people or 12 people at a meeting is such an adverse thing if you're getting good advice for him to act upon. They're just an advisory committee. They don't make any decisions. It's up to the Parks Director to come to us if there's anything major, but the Parks Director does that. So getting a better cross-section of the population, because things change. One thing Tim and Brian have chugged over the years is parks are continually evolving, that there's different uses that, you know, for instance, we never had pickleball before, and we've given up tennis courts and stuff to accommodate changing trends in recreation. We never had trails before, better use of theirs, the dog park. So we're getting a good cross-section. And these people just, they want to be heard, and we're just looking for a mechanism to get their advice into our Parks Department is all. And as somebody mentioned, as Dr. Hart had mentioned, we had some really excellent candidates. Just hate to see them get a no every year, was kind of our sentiments. So go ahead, Mr. Holmes, you can.
I'll jump right on what you said, Bill. I mean, I think we ought to have 18 people. We've got 34, 35 parks in this township, and it's too easy for a voice on that board, I think, to be outnumbered with its current configuration. I don't know how interested we are in really revamping things. 18 has some magic to me in that it would be twice the number of wards we have, and it could be two persons per ward. But I think the more people commenting, the more experiences we get. I mean, we must have interviewed 60 people this time, and so many of them wanted to be part of the township. Parks and Rec is a great place for some of these people to get involved and where they wanted to be involved. And as Bill said, it comes down to our, it's our personnel who have to make the decisions ultimately, but the more advice they can get, especially fresh advice, especially advice from new folks to the township, as well as the, you know, the continued advice, whoever are senior seasoned veterans, is a good idea. So I support a substantial increase. Plus, then it's less of an issue if people can't make every meeting. So those are my thoughts on it.
Can I also make a comment? If we're looking for diversity throughout the township, why don't we make the Parks Board appointed rather than, you know, this way we have nine individuals from each ward, which gives us, it covers everything. I'd rather do that.
Well, let's do 18, let's do two from each ward.
Yeah, but see, then it gets a crowded field, and, you know, they do make suggestions, and I just think it's, it would be, I don't know how productive, Larry, what that would be. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I think if it's word-specific, then, you know.
Steve, I just simply have to look at the last five years of appointments and see how few changes we make at Parks and Rec, anywhere, and just say the more is the better. We're never going to get, we're never going to get new people on. And without having to, without having to insult somebody who's been around for a long time and say, it's time for you to go, we need somebody new. But this, I think the more, the better. They are, at the end of the day, advisory committees.
I understand.
And so I think the more, the better.
But they advise us, and they do, I think they do vote on how they're going to make any recommendations or suggestions to the board.
What's the length of their terms, do you have any?
I believe they're five-year terms.
Five years?
I believe so.
No.
It's minimum three.
It's five years.
It's five years.
I think we should move them all to three.
Brian, do you have any thoughts on?
Well, I think, I think the two commissioners made good points. One of the things I think that's been the success of Parks and Recreation is that we've leveraged resources in the community and expertise in the community, whether it's Victor Dunne helping us with the geothermal, or it's the sports helping us with the talk on the turf field and how we do those things. So getting more input from the community is great. I do think at some point, a board too large could become unwieldy.
Why don't we, why don't we make the board three years rather than five? Five is too long, make it three years. I'm for that.
Yeah, that's a good start.
Make it three years.
Well, and I also, I mean, I appreciate Commissioner Holmes' idea, but 18 was the number that I first heard tonight. I mean, I think we were talking about expanding it by like three people or four people at the, when we were doing the interviews. And I, not that I necessarily disagree with it, but it's a little bit smaller of a leap to say if we move everybody to, if we move everybody to three years and it's a 12-person board. You know, I don't think it's bad to have opportunities, particularly in something that is buried as Parks Board, just given, you know, just off the top of my head, we have, we have the trails. You know, I got an email this week from someone in our, in our community who was talking about bird watching and whether that would be affected by frisbee golf. There's, you know, 12 different fields at the crack alone, there's 36 different parks, there's a dog park. You know, I, for something like Parks and Rec, I appreciate the concern of having too many, too many sort of people stirring the pot. Commissioner D'Amelio, I just think Parks has enough varied interest in our towns and, you know, diversity of opinions, that it's helpful to have, you know, people who have experience with the little lake, the soccer fields, the needs of playgrounds for toddlers. There's enough there for, you know, I'd be comfortable with increase.
So I would recommend, if we're going to do something like that, that we have nine people appointed, nine people individually appointed by each member of this board, according to their board, that we elect another five members at large. And so that we're not, you know, so we don't lose the chance for two or three excellent people from the Seventh Ward, but we, but we still guarantee that every ward has representation. That'd be easy to do. We just have a vote for the first five vote-getters, and then everybody has a pick.
Can I also make a general suggestion? Because we have, and the two boards that are listed are Parks and Health on our agenda. Both of those are terms of five years. I would suggest that what we're doing now makes sense in a general sense, but why, I would suggest if we look at all of our boards, I don't see the need for five-year terms on almost any of the boards. The terms are longer than our terms, and these are advisory where people change, interests change, some people don't attend, and that we try to standardize the terms of our boards, and then we can have a discussion as to the numbers of people. But five years in itself seems excessive for board membership. If someone is good, then we'll reappoint them. But if they turn out not to be, we have a position that, you know, can sort of lay bare for years. But it just seems like five years is a long time, and we can then look at all of the boards, you know, we, basically, we, and then try to standardize those. But I think a three-year term is ample for any of our boards, you know, the advisory boards, I'm speaking, not of any of our statutory boards, zoning and planning those things. That's why I said we should either limit it to three or go ward-specific, how I look at it. But I don't think we should be sort of doing this now. You know, originally, it made sense to have this tonight, but I think this may be a better topic first for a work session where we can see what all the different boards are, and then analyze and come to and create one ordinance that standardizes all of those consistent with the views of, you know, the majority of us.
I totally agree, and I'll move to table.
Well, it's just a discussion.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay, okay.
All right, that sounds good.
Further discussion in the next work session.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's fine.
Are we in agreement on that? Okay, we can plan that for the February work session. Item number 29 is continuation of the Citizens Forum for Non- Agenda Items. Mr. Berman, are there any, anybody out there?
Uh, nobody with their hand up, sir.
Great. Item number 30, new business. And then finally, item number 31, other business. Commissioner D'Amelio?
Yes, thank you, President. I want to thank residents who have reached out to me, both for and against the resolution that we passed regarding the President of the United States. I hope that, I hope the country begins to heal in the coming weeks. I hope there's a process for that. But anyway, you know what, all of our politicians, all the politicians, and everyone that was named by one of the residents on both sides, my belief is that they need to dial it down. We need to start treating each other with respect, and government needs to start working for the people, whether it be here, here in our local government, or more or less in the federal government. Nothing is going to get accomplished if we keep this up. We need to look at each other with dignity and respect, and try to come to some consensus that, you know what, we may not always agree, but we have to try to compromise and move away from what we've been dealing with. And hopefully, this country will remain strong. I'm confident that it will. I have complete confidence in citizens of this township and the United States that, after seeing the events, that I think people are realizing that, you know what, we really do need to start treating each other differently. But my hope is that our congressional members and President-elect, Mr. Biden, work towards that somehow, try to, try to make this country better and work for us, get things accomplished. There are too many people that are hurting in this country because of COVID and losing their jobs and needing assistance, and you know what, they need to start working for these people instead of dragging votes out because they're, they don't like a certain politician, or, you know, they don't like what someone said. It's just, people are hurting and were hurting, and it took, it took some, I'm sure, some wrangling to get, to get the stimulus, the last stimulus package passed. So I would ask that that happen, and happen now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Aliva?
I agree with Steve. I mean, I think the lack of respect for each other is, sorry, the lack of respect that we have for each other is. The lack of respect that we have for each other is alarming. I think that we need to get back to that. I think that we need to respect one another and see politicians. I go back to the Reagan days where, you know, him and Tip O'Neill used to have lunch once a week and have dinner with their wives. They knew each other. So they were, they were politicians during the day, but they got along. You know, when, when the date was over, they went and respected each other. So I think we need to get back to that. I think with, you know, this rhetoric and all these things is just inflaming things. Need to get back to respecting each other and having, having the, you know, looking out for, for the people and focusing on, on the people's business and not arguing all the time. So I think that that's, that's what we need to do. I have nothing further.
Thank you. Commissioner McCloskey.
Sure. We had, I said at the beginning of the meeting, just to talk about the RACP grant that we got from the library. And we also talked about how we formalized the lease in sort of preparation at the advice of our bond counsel. And I hope this is, and everybody on this board sees this progress towards moving forward with the renovation of the library. I think it's, it's something we should all be looking to finalize in 2021. And, you know, I've said many times that this has been a long drawn out process, but it's time to, 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 to complete the job on the library and give us the best library we can at that site. So I hope everyone looks forward to the progress we can make in that. I do real quick want to say congratulations to Lieutenant Michael Glenn, who retired earlier this week after a long and distinguished career with the Hereford Police Department. And we certainly in the third ward were aware of his departure, given his final ride that went through his small residential street. As I got several calls wondering what was happening because people were on edge with various national events. But this was a local, a true local happy story of someone who dedicated himself to this township and got a final farewell. And also congratulations to our chief, who tomorrow we sworn in as the president of Delaware County Chiefs of Police Association. So that's good news. And we, we know we have the professional and highly respected chief. And tomorrow he becomes that and it'll become official in Delaware County. So congratulations to the chief on that. And final note, we all, we all have talked and expressed opinions on social media. And I, and I agree with almost everything everyone said today. I think we also have to get back to being willing to talk to citizens in the public, being willing to talk to them and explain to them the truth that, you know, sometimes it's not always information they want to hear, but part of a politician's job is to be honest with the public so that they are informed and participatory citizens in this democracy. And that is something that has carried the United States of America since the beginning. And it's, 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 truth is a powerful thing. And the public can handle the truth. So as I said in my earlier remarks, I do, I do pray for this country and hope that we can, you know, our leaders can find the ability to tell the truth and choose country over an allegiance to a man. So, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Siegel.
Thank you. It's interesting because when you look back on this board, when we've had to confront national issues, we have been unified. We tend to disagree more about the local, which is our job. But I'm heartened by the fact that whether it was, you know, events last week, which were nothing like this country has ever seen, gun control, gerrymandering and other issues like that, this board has always been unified, which I think demonstrates to the public that even though we don't vote on those issues, we do have a consensus that is good and we do believe in what we had. Last week was something we've never seen and hopefully will never see again in this country. That's all I have and thank you all for your vote tonight on that.
Commissioner Lewis.
Thank you. Just, just two things. Number one, I'd like to have maybe Dave Panoni at our work session address. I know they've done some work in the stormwater mitigation area. And I had a number of streets in my ward that were affected by these most recent 1,100-year storms that seem to happen two or three times a year now. But anyway, I'd like to have him maybe make a presentation to the board as to the status of where all those, those various projects stand. And then secondly, and I've already talked to you about this, Jerry, but the Hereford Township Adult School would like to make a presentation at our work session as well. They've provided an important service to our community for, I think, over 50 years. Just like to update us that they're obviously struggling like a lot of entities these days with COVID. So I'd appreciate them having the opportunity to come before the board.
Yeah, I have asked that they be put on the February work session.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Commissioner Holmes.
Not to put scary visions in everybody's head, but Commissioner Lewis at Hereford Adult Night School, my wife and I took ballroom dancing there a couple of years ago. So actually, I, I support your efforts to, to support that organization. I think it's a great organization. I have a quick announcement. I, we had a PICO outage in our, on my street today, the 2,100 block of, of Chestnut Avenue. And we were all taken by surprise. It was a planned outage. But the news of it was, the warning of it was put in the regular mail to all of us. And I guess that was behind all the Christmas presents and Christmas cards that we still haven't received. So none of us knew about it. And it was a bit of a surprise on a Monday morning that about 25 houses were out of power. PICO did respond and they were, they were apologetic for the issue with the mailing. And they did move on the project very quickly and restored service fast. I have to give them credit for that. But they alerted me to two other outages that are going to take place in the Artmore, in the sixth ward. And one outage that may be scheduled for tomorrow or the next day. I don't know if this, in Gulfy Road, so this might be you, Mr. McCloskey. But in particular, on the 19th of January, the 2,800 block of Morris Road and on the 26th of January, the 600 block of Windwood Road, there are currently scheduled outages. And you should be receiving something in the mail. So I want folks to know about that. With regard to our resolution tonight, I have four children. My oldest had just turned four when the incident of 9/11, you know, when the horrors of 9/11 took place. But for my other children, they weren't alive or they were just infants when it happened. And what happened last Wednesday for this next generation of children is really kind of their 9/11. And it's important for all of us to think about that and to think carefully about how we want to address this issue with our children. I think our stance tonight is very important on to establish really right versus wrong as opposed to simply this or that. And I agree with you, Commissioner D'Amelio, and all of you that we do need to improve our discourse, but it still remains crucial. And it's a crucial step we took tonight. There are rights and wrongs in this world and we need to call them out. We do. On a lighter note, I got a lot of email and a lot of comments on Facebook about the resolution. And I know you folks always enjoy something that's at my expense. So of all the things said about me in trying to propose this resolution, idiot, you're a disgrace, Larry, not the boxer Holmes, obviously. I just have to say that my favorite was being called a pompous Georgetown fake righteous designation, righteous indignation, and please pour it down the toilet where it belongs. I thought that one was good enough that I should just say it to everybody. Thank you all for adopting this resolution tonight. Sent a very good message to everybody. And what, what our very first speaker tonight in the comments that Dr. Hart read, who said how important it was even at the local level for us to do whatever it is we could do to express our outrage at what was taking place down there. It is my privilege to be on this board and to serve all of you. So, thank you.
Commissioner Rexler.
Yes, just to follow up on that, I, I'm glad that we have made the unanimous decision. Our voice is now heard and now we can concentrate on getting back to our job. And those officials above us, the higher levels, can get back to do theirs. There's a lot of work to be done with pandemic, national security and other items that need to get done that are just still being lost in this mess. So thank you everyone for doing that. So getting back to my job, the Hilltop Civic Association meets January 28th, which is my normal quarterly meeting with all my citizens. So anybody that wants to come out and Zoom there and socially distance at the On Air Fire Company at 7:00 PM on the 28th is welcome to come. I'd be remiss, I want to bid fine farewell on Saturday. One of my long-term residents, Ms. Rosely Ritchie Begley from Greenview Lane, at her funeral, she took her last drive down Greenview Lane behind the golf course and through the golf course and route to St. Peters of Wall. A longtime Hereford resident, stall owner of the community here in the ninth ward. And then I'll offer my congratulations to Chief Viola. Congratulations tomorrow and to Michael Glenn for his last ride too. His, his last ride, obviously a lot more pleasant, but Mrs. Ritchie was 92 years old, lived a great life, was a great resident, great citizen here of our community as well. So I thank everybody there. And again, thank you for the resolution. And we need to get back to work and we need to do it honorably. So thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rexler. Commissioner Quinn.
And I agree, agree with what Bill just said. We need to get back to work, but we took a good stand or tonight. And, and then we need to get back to a world that is not about R or D. When I get calls, I don't care if you're in R or D, I'm going to go out and work for you. That's what we do best, best here. That's what the other eight of us on this board do best. Proud to serve with you guys. And Chief, or, or, or congrats on, on your thing. And I'd also like to say, I think over the past few weeks, we've had a few or, or, or some fires in the town that we're seeing areas. And just remember what these, what this, what these fire companies do in our town. And when there are new drives come out, please, please send, send in a, you know. Thanks. So thank you guys.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. I had a friend of mine tell me recently that she was canceling her subscription to 2021. She had the seven-day trial and it didn't work out. It was definitely a tough week last week, along with the events of last, of January 6th. We also, on a number of days, had more than 4,000 deaths in, from COVID-related illnesses. There is a vaccine. The rollout has not been great. It's, and the blame can go to the federal level, it can go to the state, but things are improving. I was able, luckily enough, to be able to get my first dose a few weeks ago. Looking forward to my second dose. They'll say that after getting the dose, I'm now able to dunk a basketball that's on a seven-foot rim that I could have done before. But basically, it's not something with, with side effects. And it's going to be, it's the next stage of all our responsibility is going to be to get the vaccine if we can get it. That if half the people get the vaccine, we're not going to get rid of this virus. We really need somewhere above 70%. So I know many people are anxious to get it, but others are questioning. Please, if you have the opportunity, it protects you, it protects all of us. So it's, it's something we can all do. And I would just urge people to give that some consideration when they're available. There's nothing else? A motion to adjourn? I'm moved.
I'm moved.